Mr. Board Secretary, this meeting has been advertised according to local public opinion.
Yes, it has, Mr. Mackinon.
Everybody please stand and join me in a pledge. My pledge is ladies and gentlemen, the United States of America, and to a republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Board Secretary, here is a roll call, please.
Mr. Baupin.
Here.
Mr. Bishada.
Here.
Mrs. Bruno Reculia.
Here.
Mr. Sayak.
Here.
Mrs. De Finto.
Here.
Mrs. Esposito.
Here.
Mr. Mackinon.
Present.
Mrs. Trapp.
Here.
Mrs. Backer.
Dr. Alfonso, we have a couple of presentations this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mackinon. First group that I'd like to send up is Mr. Brown. Are you here in the Odyssey of Mind?
Yes.
I would like to thank Mr. Brown. This is a different type of request, which we very much appreciate it. And I'll turn the microphone over to my friend, Mr. Brown. Go ahead.
Thank you very much, Dr. Alfonso, and Mrs. Sutherland and the Board of Education. I do need to say, though, it's not just myself, Mrs. McCabe with the High School Odyssey of Mind.
I'm sorry.
Basically, our students who participated this year on the Odyssey of Mind team, the students who participated this year on the Odyssey of Mind team, both at the high school and at the middle school, they want to express their appreciation to you, the Board of Education, for allowing them to participate in a program that is so very rewarding to them on so many levels. So I'm going to turn the microphone over right now to Erica Kang, a seventh grader at the middle school.
I would like to thank the Board of Education as much as I can for letting us do Odyssey of Mind. Odyssey of Mind made me, made taught me to be even more creative. It challenged me to think of new ways of doing things, whether it was making costumes or making backgrounds, making cards. There was some kind of challenge every time that made us, like, literally think outside the box. It gave us a chance to interact with other people, and with that, it built our teamwork. It helped me build my confidence because it helped me share my ideas. And that taught some of us also, we learned to be like a team player because sometimes some people gave up their ideas to let other people get their accomplishment. Odyssey of Mind, Odyssey of the Mind, for me, was a long life experience. It was like a job where we have to work along with others, and you have to get along with them to get a task or a problem fixed. It helped me understand, don't think that everything will be so easy and expect challenges to come your way. It taught me not, it taught me to not be afraid of others and to speak out and give ideas to others. When I was figuring out challenges, it showed me to be, to explore more and experiment, to try and not give up so easily. It taught, it taught me not to ever be a quitter and keep experimenting and exploring when challenges come around. This way, we can keep on progressing further and further. I would really like to thank the Board of Education for letting us do this. So, thank you for letting us do this.
Hi, I'm Erica Doniu.
And I'm Arianna Frischer.
We're representing the High School Odyssey of the Mind teams. We want to thank the Board of Education for giving us the opportunity to go to regionals and states this year. Thank you for funding us with transportation and for letting us work inside the school.
We placed second in regionals and third in states, which was a great accomplishment for ours, and we want to thank you for allowing us to achieve this. Odyssey of the Mind has allowed us to work better with others and to develop a more creative mind. We hope to do even better next year. Thank you.
So, thank you very much on behalf of Miss McCabe, the middle school and high school Odyssey of Mind teams, and myself.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to say that Odyssey of Mind is a program that the Board of Education should be supporting. I think we need to thank you, Mr. Brown, and his students for his achievements this year, and I can say with a lot of confidence that this is something the Board of Education would promote. Thank you, sir.
I'd like to make a comment.
Go ahead, Mrs. Trapp.
My son did OM with Mr. Brown, I don't know, five, six, eight years ago, and when he explained to me what OM was about, he said, well, like, one of the ladies was saying about thinking outside the box. So he said, it's like the king, if they ask you who the kings are, so you could say the King Arthur, King Henry, and then the King of Hearts, you know, something a little bit different than what, than what you would think, than I would think. And I also, one of the things Mr. Brown really, really spoke to the children about is that it doesn't matter if you come in first place or where you come, as long as you work hard getting to it, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, our second presentation, I'd ask Mr. Brown, Mr. James Brown, the high school principal, to come up, and this is something that I'm very proud of. These individuals, I didn't make it near the top ten, I would put it north near the bottom ten, and these are elite students, and Mr. Brown will assist us in calling up each of the top ten academic students, along with the salutatorian and the valedictorian. You should also know that we will also, at the awards assembly, will be giving out each of these individuals a plaque. So this is only a board of presentation, but also at the June eighth banquet and awards assembly, we'll be doing that as well. So, Mr. Brown, now further ado.
Ladies and gentlemen, on behalf of the Board of Education, I just want to say that we do a lot of presentations at meetings, and if you've become regular to meetings, we honor a lot of student achievements. We just recently had sports teams that have reached the top of their season, and, but I want to let you know that this is big. You know, this is a school district, and to be in the top ten students, this is something that really needs, we really need to talk about and congratulate our students. You have to figure that with 400 students in a senior class, to be in the top ten, you're in a two and a half percent of the students in the senior class, and this is certainly noteworthy. And I know we've congratulated in this very room sports teams that have won state championships, that had a good season, but to be the top ten academic students in a high school, this is superior sustained performance over four years. This is not something you just do in one season. So we need to understand that this is big time to be the top ten students of a high school of this size. Now, how many parents of the top ten students are in attendance today? I want to congratulate you, absolutely. Because as a parent myself, I can tell you unequivocally, it starts in the home. And we as parents, you know, we're not judged by our accomplishments, but by the accomplishments of our children. So again, I want to congratulate you, and of all the presentations I do, I'm most proud about this one. So, Mr. Brown?
Oh. All right, we'll start off, we're going to go from ten to number one. Number ten student, Karini Shah. Number nine, Maureen McKenna. Number eight, Terrence O'Connor. Number seven, Michael Internato. Number six, Riel Guzo. Number five, China Shah. Number four, Pooja Pareet. Number three, Teresa Highslaw. Now, for the number two student who will be speaking at graduation, our salutatorian or salutatorian, Ektah Kadakia. And the number one student of the class, the valedictorian, Mark Quillo.
Number one!
Just as a point of note for parents, the top ten students will be highlighted in our annual awards program, which is on June eighth. They'll be on the cover, and I'm sure you'll see them winning many awards. And to the point of OM, the high school has agreed to work with the state council next year on having the OM state competition here in Saraville, just as a side note, going to show support for our OM people. Thank you.
That's going to be tough to follow. Okay, pressing on with the agenda, presentations we did, correspondence. Everybody should receive copies of the monthly technology work order report and a monthly maintenance report. Anybody have any questions, comments, releases, additions to those reports? If not, I'll press on with the minutes. Everybody should receive a copy of the April twelfth regular executive session meetings and the special meeting of April nineteenth. Does anybody have any questions, comments, releases, additions to the minutes? If not, I'll accept the motion to file and accept the minutes.
Mr. Mackinon, there is only one correction on the April twelfth meeting on their finance number eight should be noted, and Mr. Dan Baupin.
Anyone have any questions, releases? If not, I accept the motion to accept the files. Any a second? Any roll call vote? Mr. Baupin.
Yes.
Mr. Bishada.
Yes.
Mrs. Bruno Reculia.
Yes.
Mrs. De Finto.
Yes.
Mrs. Esposito.
Yes.
Mr. Mackinon.
Yes.
And Mrs. Trapp.
Yes.
Okay, we don't have the student council representative or parent involved in representative. We don't have the tennis report. Leading the district highlights tonight will be Mrs. Helen Bruegler.
The Saraville Elementary Schools and Saraville Middle Schools just keep giving back. We are so proud of them. The Middlesex County Food Organization and Outreach Distribution Services has offered their thanks and congratulations to our students for their amazing contribution. This year, approximately 61 tons of food was collected from the 121 participating schools throughout the county. Out of the 61 tons, the Saraville schools once again impressed us with their totals. Arlett, 950 pounds. Eisenhower, 700 pounds. Truman, 800 pounds. Wilson, 700. SUES, 750. Middle School, 200 pounds, which gives the district a total of 4,100 pounds of food donated. Thank you to the students and their families for their much-needed donations, and thank you for showing us just how much you care. Where would one meet both Benedict Arnold and Robert E. Lee simultaneously? How about Betsy Ross and Frederick Douglass? If you were at the SUES on Wednesday, April 13th, or Thursday, April 14th, you would have been able to. The fourth and fifth grade students dressed as historical figures and were available to be interviewed by parents and staff members. Some of the noteworthy figures to appear included Thomas Jefferson, George and Martha Washington, Harriet Beecher Stowe, and Paul Revere, just to name a few. One fifth grade student, Patrick Smith, was awarded first place in a contest sponsored by the New Jersey State Federation of Women's Clubs for his original poem entitled True Love, and was presented with this honor during the interviews. The teachers who put this fascinating project together were Grace Gabriel, Scott Normberger, Leah Craig, Nina Obrik, Jen Scarpa, Jen Mayhew, Darren Alvin, Jen O'Keefe, Bethany Grimm, Dana Ebichhausen, Laurie Bukanski, Sandy Kromanski, and Mary Desmond. Kudos on a great job of bringing our past back to life. Emma Arlett School celebrated a very special occasion on May 9th, 2011. A representative of AAA presented Principal Timothy Byrne and Arlett Safety Patrol with a check in the amount of $500. This award was given to only 10 schools in the entire country. Arlett School is the first school in the state of New Jersey to achieve this accomplishment. Also participating in this presentation was Councilman Nick Coretti, who gave Principal Byrne and the Arlett Safety Patrol a certificate of recognition from the mayor and borough council of Saraville to commemorate the occasion. The Arlett Safety Patrol consists of third grade students who assist with the arrival and dismissal procedures at the school. These students are examples for the younger students in the building of how to live the six pillars of character educations: compassion, respect, responsibility, trust, fairness, and citizenship. These pillars are the foundation of Arlett School's character education program. The grant will further these practices at the school, which also won a national award last year for its efforts to develop these character traits among the students. Pam Gunther, librarian at Arlett School, has recently been elected vice president of the New Jersey Association of School Librarians. She's currently serving as recording secretary and will begin her new position in August. Her main responsibility will be chairing the 2012 annual fall conference and preparing for subsequent roles as president-elect and NJASL president over the following two years. Mrs. Gunther is also presently completing a two-year term as president of the county affiliate, the Union Middlesex Association of School Librarians, which inspired her growing involvement in the state professional organization. Finally, on Saturday, May 14th, 2011, Saraville War Memorial High School senior Lauren Hines, her family, and Ms. Grimm, high school art teacher, attended the Clay &amp; Mind closing reception at the Clay Studio in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania. Lauren's project was on display to public viewing in a gallery space at the Clay Studio. In addition to Lauren winning second place with Clay &amp; Mind, she was also chosen as a scholarship winner overall. As the winner of this scholarship, Lauren and Ms. Grimm will be attending a ceramic workshop over the summer. This is an extremely rewarding and exciting experience for Lauren. Not only was her work displayed in a gallery, but she will be able to gain additional knowledge and skills in ceramics while attending the workshop at the Clay Studio. Congratulations, Lauren.
Thank you, Mrs. Bruegler, for filling in. You read very well. Dr. Alfonso, can you please thank Mr. Your Sub-tenant Report?
Thank you, Mr. Mackinon. Starting with buildings and grounds, it's band camp time in August. Any questions with section A? With none moving to finance, one through 12 are regular resolutions. Starting with number 13 on page three is an outdoor condenser for the trainees room that we will be approving tonight. Fourteen is the summer school agreement that we always, for the last five years, have been in conjunction with the Middlesex Regional Educational Services Commission, as well as fifteen is also the use of the school where it's being held once again during this specific summer. The Board of Education is also to do some electrical work, upgrades at Wilson School, and also the heating system at the middle school, and that will be two major items for next year. Landscaping services as well is number 18 with custom care. Number 19 is our asbestos contract for adherent, and that's our asbestos contract. Number 20 is Landis Show Associates, the approval of the architectural contract. Twenty-one is our insurance contract approval with Doyle, a line screw, which has done an outstanding job with our insurance. Number 22 is property casualty. That's the Willis Company that does all property casual insurance stuff. Number 23 on page seven is Edada Services, which basically 23, 24, and 25, and 26 are our bidding services companies that we go into contract with. Capital Financial Apologies, number 27 on page seven, is our capital finance consultants to help us with bonding and that nature. Any questions with section B?
Dr. Alfonso, I have one question for Mr. DeAndrea. Mr. DeAndrea, with the Optimum Light Path, when do we anticipate that being installed?
We're still shooting for the September deadline, but right now contracts are being drawn and worked. I believe they were in the buildings today measuring things and that nature, so we're in the process of moving forward.
Thank you.
I have a question. I know it's been a while since we asked about solar, any movement, any word?
Still waiting on debt service out of the state. I'm actually meeting with the borough administrator next Tuesday. They have a meeting with their civil engineers to go over a PPA, a voucher purchase power agreement, so I'm going to sit in and see what they're doing up to town and see from that point, but we're on hold waiting for debt service because that was the biggest part of what our funding is going to be about.
Just a side note on that solar, Mrs. Backer and I were at a parade here for the Saraville Little League, and State Assemblyman Cochran was walking with us, and she brought that issue up to find out what's going on in Trenton, and we, I haven't heard anything, and I don't think she has heard anything either about it.
Thank you, moving to sections. C, personnel, non-certified, unpaid medical leave. Any questions with C? With none moving to E, personnel certified, retirement, Sue Jajnovich, I want to wish Sue very well in her retirement, which is God-blessed, and she's been a long time. Number two on page eight is a maternity leave, and obviously a coaching assignment, which is prorated based on the fact that somebody's going out of the maternity leave. Number five is professional days, which are listed as such on pages eight and nine, and on page nine is one employment for the, for our guidance council to finish out the school year. Any questions with, and there's some substitutes. Any questions with section G? With none moving to E, policy, no report. F, curriculum, once again, these are special service placements on pages 10 and 11. Any questions with section, with that section? With none moving to G, co-curriculum, there's a rain date for the campout at Eisenhower. Hopefully, it'll be nice this Friday. Truman School, there's the activities for Truman School and Saraville Middle School, which is on page 12. Any questions with section G? With none moving to H, some transportation waivers on page 12, some transportation route approvals in quotes, numbers two and three on page 13, some following transportation contracts, which is number four, and it runs to page five, and then there are also the renewal of special education transportation routes at a 1.23% increase, as well as for the regular education at 1.23, which is on pages 14, 15, and 16. I want to commend Ms. Shadlock again for doing an outstanding job and really keeping our transportation costs down. With number seven on page 16, there are 14 trips being approved on pages 16, 17, and 18. Moving to number eight in the same section, these are the buses to transport third graders to the orientation for the San Sello Elementary School. Those are the dates. Number nine is the bus for the SCA members to participate in the Memorial Day Parade. And then 10 is a shuttle bus for guests attending the graduation ceremony at the high school on, I believe that's June 23rd. And then there is a request to approve employment of a school bus driver, bus aids for the extended school year, and there's a big camp, a bus for the big camp, use of school buses, which we always do each year. Moving to the addendum in the front, I'll do mine, and I know Mr. DeAndrea has one, but before Mr. DeAndrea does his, I would like to do mine. On section C, please add number two, which is an extension to an unpaid medical leave for a power professional. Again, on the addendum, number three is a student volunteers for summer enrichment program. Section D is a retirement. Again, I'm a grade one teacher, I want to wish Ms. Killian good luck. We just received it, I believe, a couple of days ago, so she will be leading as an elementary teacher at Wilson School. Please add number four on the section D to following professional days and people. Also, please add the, on the second page of the addendum, an additional substitutes. On number seven, again, this is summer enrichment program, so this is the entire program with the program coordinators, directors, and teachers. I'm going to have an addition before I get, the auto club is G, which is also has a rain date because it was terrible out, and was supposed to be scheduled for the sunbathing, moved it rain date to June 5th. I have a curriculum, F, for the curriculum that I want to add, that we discussed in closed session, and it will read, "The Board of Education has requested to approve the findings of the Student Discipline Committee with respect to a Saraville middle school student as a result of the hearing which took place on May 17th, 2011." So that would be entered into the record. Mr. DeAndrea, I know you have one item also.
The one item that the board discussed this evening in the executive is the renewal of your insurance plans for the upcoming school year. The only note is that keep in mind the Oxford plan is for two years.
Any questions, comments from the Board about agenda items or open up the public? Hearing none at this time, I go open the public for any comments or questions on agenda items only. Please be mindful, I will open up again to the public for any business that may come before the board. At this time, anybody have any questions or comments on the agenda? Please come up and state your name and address for the record. Anyone? Okay, I will close the public portion for agenda items. I'm going to take a motion to accept the policy of the tenants' report.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. We need a roll call vote, Mr. DeAndrea. Mr. Baupin.
I got number eight, section B, yes, and all our items.
Mr. Bishada.
Yes.
Mrs. Bruno Reculia.
Yes.
Mrs. De Finto.
Yes.
Mrs. Esposito.
Yes.
Mrs. Trapp.
Yes.
And Mr. Mackinon.
Yes. Following the report, after an information discussion, I just want to mention something to the board. I think I caused some confusion this week about committee assignments for board members. That's a prerogative of the president of the board, and I have not made any new committee assignments. It was desired of the new president to keep committees as they are to end the school year. And I take it fair to everybody on the board that if you want to switch committees, no one has a right to stay in any committee for any period of time, regardless of their longevity on the board. I know when we put committees together, we try to like to consider people's experiences and what they like to do, and I will leave that to the next president. I know personally, I will serve on any committee, and I'm asked to contribute to the board any way I can. So what I'm saying is the committees are staying the same. There's been no new additions to any committees. Ms. Backer returned, we'll discuss that, and whatever people's opinions or views or thoughts should be taken into consideration. Any other discussion, any background information on anything? If not, I know- If not, I know Mr. Sayak's not here, I'm sure there's stuff to update us on school board associations, but I'm going to wait till next meeting. At this time, I go to the public for any business that may come before the board. Anybody for the public, for any business that come before the board, please come up, state your name and record, name and address on the record. Anyone? Seeing no one, at this time, I'll close the public portion, and I'll accept the motion for a gentleman.
So moved.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for attending.